We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise? And Tom Lewis from Community Congregational Church is going to lead us.
Thank you. Please pray with me. Dear God, our Father, we thank you for this community and the people that call Benita Springs their home, and for the businesses that operate here. We thank you for those who are willing to serve to make Benita a safe, peaceful, and prosperous community. We pray for our law enforcement officers and firefighters, for the men and women who put their lives on the line every day to protect us. We pray you watch over them and their families. We also pray for all of our city workers. We pray for our schools, for our administrators and teachers, and for our students, Lord, to learn much and be successful citizens. We thank you for Mayor Nelson and for the council members who serve this city. We ask for your wisdom, guidance, conviction, and courage. Give them righteous and compassionate leadership. We also pray for the decisions they make, that they'll be pleasing to you and bring blessing upon this community. We pray for our county, state, and federal leaders. Help them, Lord, to serve in the best interests of the people they serve. We ask also for your influence upon our economy. Bring prosperity back, Lord God, in a way that pleases you and blesses many, our country and those of the world. We pray for our military, God, watch over them. The men and women who are scattered around this world, God, please protect them, encourage them, help them to do what's right. We ask most of all for your will to be done through Christ our Lord, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Could you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Slakka?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Good morning, everybody.
Here.
Councilman Longkard.
Here.
Okay, we're going to go to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item, please come forward.
Rick Steinmeier, is there a fairness issue on paving private roads? I'd love to see these roads paved. Who owns the road after they're paved, or who owns the road now? Little questions. We've had trouble paving these before, but it looks like we're going to get them done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
My name is Jerry Masters. I'm a Benita Springs Utilities customer and ratepayer, and commenting on behalf of BSU's petition to extend the franchise. BSU has been inconsistent and irregular in its application of CPI rate increases several times in recent years. It stands to reason that city councils should amend the current franchise ordinance to eliminate BSU's annual ability to raise water and sewer by CFI index without council approval. All BSU rate change requests should be studied by an experienced independent utility consultant hired by the city at the cost of BSU. There was no provision for CPI indexing in the prior BSU franchises Lee County. Application of price escalators by BSU without review and approval by this council doesn't encourage efficiencies and savings for us as rate-paying customers. There's an interesting fact that you should all be aware of. BSU has two non-restrictive cash and cash equivalent accounts. One is readily displayed in their budgets, the other is not. For 2011, one account totals $23.3 million. The other is not reflected in recent budgets. This is an unencumbered short-term trading account with $16 million in it. The 2000-year-end total of these and one non-restrictive account totals $50 million. More historical CPI indexing and financial information is being developed to assist in assessing this ordinance review along with presentation of other recommendations. Please remember that the window of time you have to renegotiate this franchise ordinance is over five months. We urge you to use as much of this time as necessary to perform due diligence on these matters. A reminder, the original ordinance 02-14 was narrowly adopted in 2002 on a 4-3 vote. Council members and members of the public had many concerns with some of its items. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Robert Van der Grift, Benita Springs.
Mr. Van Der Grift, could you pull the microphone down a little bit so I can hear you? Thank you very much.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Members of city council, I had Audrey Van, no, your clerk, Diane Lynn distribute a packet amongst you. It's an information packet, and its bottom line is what I went through to vote. I hold the privilege of voting very, very dear to my heart. I think each and every one of us bestowed by God the privilege of voting. And I am now a voter, what I think, by proxy. I'm representing 27 people. And I hold that to be a very, very close thing to my heart, to vote for 27 people. I don't know what 27 people think of this or anything else on the board, but I do attend the meetings. I'm very diligent with those. I missed last night's meeting, but this packet shows what I went through. Update on it, I am now, like I said, representing 27 people. I don't know what you can do about the voting system, but I think you should take a good, hard look at it and see if some of these changes can be made. 20,000 people do not vote. They were in the same position as I was in. I don't think that that's right. I think it should be changed in the documents. I had a plan of how to change it. It's not perfect, but it's better than what exists. I thank you very much for listening to me. I thank you for your serving on this board.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Diane Frizin, Hickory Boulevard. On the agenda today, you're talking about beach parks, and it does say work with Lee County for Benita Springs to gain control over all of Benita Beach. That's a concern to us, of course. Want to ask a couple of questions. And what does this council gain by having control over the beach? And what will the residents lose, number one? Number two, more importantly, would the county still have very much interest in paying their one-third or more towards the beach renourishment, should you take control of it? Or is this city going to be able to step up and pay that additional amount? Or again, try to assess residents? That's our questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move along to proclamations and presentation. And at this time, Linda Lowell, would you please come forward? Carl, our employees always sit in the back, back there, and we're going, come on up. It's like church. How would you know? Am I right? Oh. Hi. Yeah, that's right. He won't. It's my pleasure. Linda is our upstairs person there. She greets everyone that comes into the outer door there, or the inner door there. And very pleasant person. Thank you very much there. And Five Years of Service presented to Linda Lowell as of the 7th day of March 2012 in appreciation and recognition for five years of public service to the city of Benita Springs, Florida. Linda, thank you so very much for being so kind and being such a friendly part of the what goes on up in our inner sanctum up there. Thank you so much. Everyone. Okay. It's amazing that Dave isn't out in the field today for a change. This is again for Five Years of Service. Dave is one of our fine people who are out there in the field, out there doing these things for us in public service, and the real people out there in the community get to meet Dave and the people that work for Parks and Rec and Public Works. I mean, thank you so much for the way you represent us, because, I mean, when they don't represent us well, we don't, we hear about it. And you know what? Because of them, because we have quality employees, makes us really look good. Thank you so much for what you do. And this is presented to Dave LaCarty as of the 26th day of March 2012 in appreciation and recognition for the five years of public service to the city of Benita Springs, Florida. Dave, thank you for your hard work, and thank you for sticking with us here at the city of Benita Springs, the people of Benita Springs, the citizens, and all of us really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay. Was that Wurstel?
Wersley.
Not even close. Wersley.
Like Nestle, S-T-L-E.
Very nice.
People seem to remember it.
You know, I could identify it with something that sounded like food, so thank you very much. I like that. With the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Director, she's our new one. And so, thank you for coming here today, and we're looking forward to your presentation.
You're very welcome. I'm very happy to be here. Good morning, Mayor, council members. As the mayor said, I am the new executive director for the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. I have been, excuse me, on the job for all of seven weeks as of today, so I am still learning and getting to know all the players in the area. I am still depending a great deal on my council and on my staff members to get me up to speed on many of the projects. And I know that in the past, there has been a great deal of turmoil with the agency, and that has led to questions about value and return on investment for the assessments that the jurisdictions paid to us. My directive from my council has been to develop a work plan and to keep the best and rethink the rest. So that is what I'm in the process of doing now. And I am out talking to individual boards, commissions, council members, commission members, to find out what it is that they need in their communities so that we can provide that assistance. What I'm hearing is that the agency provides a great deal of value through the environmental program and the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, and that our climate change program studies, training is very valuable, is known throughout the state of Florida, and not only in Florida, but nationally and internationally. So we're going to continue to work on that. We have applied for a new grant that would involve providing a training modules specifically for, specifically for planners in the area. We would train all of the other regional development councils on this climate change module, and then we would develop a webinar with the Florida American Planning Association. So we're continuing to beef up those programs. I'm not sure, though, that everybody knows that we are an economic development district, and that we are funded through the Federal Economic Development Agency, and that we develop a comprehensive environmental development strategy for the federal government. And we are in the process of updating that now. So that's an area where we need to market ourselves better and to get more of our members involved in that process. I don't think people also realize the value we have as far as our GIS mapping and demographic assistance. And so, we're looking into how we can get out there and better market and let people know that we can provide these services to them. I'm also hearing from individuals that they would like us to be a clearinghouse for grants. And we are seeing hundreds of grants come across our desk each week, and we want to make sure that we know what your projects are so that we can ensure that our members are getting the information, have the ability to apply for the grants, and to administer the grants once they get them. So we are working on developing a list of all of the projects in our region. I don't know all of them yet, but I am offering to you that I would be willing to sit with you individually and to hear your concerns or what your needs are in Benita Springs, because we want to ensure that Southwest Florida has a big and bright future, and I still bet from the one that is up there, the presentation that's up there next. But I've also handed out to you a packet of information that covers our specific programs, contacts, if you need them. And I would, again, be happy to work with all of you in understanding what your needs are. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay.
I know you have a full agenda.
Council, do you have any questions this time? Martha?
I just want to make a comment. Thank you so much for coming to visit us and making the RPC's face known here, because there are, that climate change thing, it's not just about climate change, but sea level rise and community planning for, you know, 100 years in the future. I'm very impressed with your start in the last seven weeks, and it should be encouraging for us here. And I think there is an opportunity. I'd like to hear more about the grants. Are you saying that you would help jurisdictions that are members to apply for grants, and you would be the grant writer?
We absolutely could do that for jurisdictions. What I'm trying to be very careful of at this point in time is not to step on anyone's toes, because many of the communities that we're working with already have grant writers, or they already have planning staff that are writing grants. But what we're offering to do is, if you don't have that ability, we can step in and help you write the grant, we can help you administer the grant. Some of the HUD and the federal grants can be very, very challenging to administer. And we have been doing that, and we have expertise in that area, and we're offering that to all our members.
That's awesome, because we could probably use that. And could you just tell a little bit about your background, because I think it's pretty impressive?
Oh, okay. Well, I have been working in the planning field for over 35 years. I started out in upstate New York, in Chautauqua County, as a space utilization coordinator, and I actually laid out all of their office space for them so that people wouldn't put their desks in front of doors, and they could actually access offices. But that's where I obtained my interest in planning. And from there, I moved to New Jersey, and I went to Rutgers and obtained my undergraduate from Rutgers University. And during that time in New Jersey, I worked for an environmental consulting firm and a law firm for seven years. Once I had my degree, I moved back to my hometown, which was Dunkirk, New York, and I served as the Planning and Economic Development Director there, until I was elected mayor and served three terms as a mayor for the city. And I think that that was probably my best planning experience, because you really got exposed to all of the services and all of the needs of the city.
My condolences.
So, from there, I did work in Collier County for a short time, and most recently, I came from Cincinnati, where I was the chief planner for the last eight years. So I'm anxious to be back here and to tackle the challenges that we're facing.
Good. All right. Anything else, Council?
I just also wanted to say thank you for coming and making this presentation, and welcome, welcome. Thank you for coming. Could you tell me more about your natural resources overview of services?
Well, I can probably tell you very little compared to what my staff could tell you. And I wouldn't want to shortchange them in any way, but I would be happy to have them contact you directly and explain all the services that we have to offer.
I'll reach out, because I have a constituent issue which I believe you'll be very helpful for.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Margaret, thank you very much for coming here, and come back anytime. We look forward to working closely with you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we get to go to the master plan update for the parks. Carl?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members. As you'll recall, you all adopted a strategic plan earlier this year, and so you're going to start seeing some of those items on the strategic plan come forward to you. Today, first up, even though we've been working on a number of them, first coming back to you is the Parks Master Plan Update. And as you'll see from the presentation that was provided to you, which by the way is a condensed version of the written update that's being prepared, that Nicole and her staff, as well as staff members from across other departments in the city, have worked very hard to put this together. I am proud to say that we had the expertise to do this in-house, and therefore, we were able to save probably $38,000 plus on not using a consultant on this. Now, other than one item that Nicole will discuss with you further, later today, there's no decisions required of you today, other than to try to get your feedback and your direction on the next steps on this plan, and any suggestions you might have to improve it. And that's what we're looking for from you. So having said all that, I'd like to introduce Nicole and have her do the presentation.
Thank you, Carl. As Carl said, this was done in-house this time, so we did save $38,000, which is the cost that it was in 2007 when we hired a consultant. This was put together primarily by Parks and Rec staff, but we also used community development, we had the help of public works. So we did use other departments as well to help bring all of this together. This is, as Carl said, number four on the strategic plan, and I kind of just went by what your recommendations were. For example, enhancing our recreational facilities was a big priority. It actually had four dots, so it was important. And that's primarily what my recommendations are. As we go through, you'll see based on our population numbers from the Census Bureau that we're not looking to gain tremendous amounts of population, so what we have does suffice. We just need to enhance them and make them better. So as I go through this, I will be requesting two items, actually. One is on the consent agenda for the Benita Trail. The other one would be in regards to the Mayhood property once I get there. All others are just recommendations that are made by me, and it's really just to bring forth discussion. These are things that I would like to see in the parks, but I want your input as to what you would like for me to do. So it's not set in stone by any means. It's just based on needs that I've heard from the community that they would like to see, and also in regards to the Mayhood property, what came out of the public workshop as to what the community would like to have. So as we go through this, it is a little lengthy. Carl only gave me 20 minutes. I know. So I will kind of go through it a little quickly, but if you do have questions, you know, please stop me and ask. I would be more than happy to answer anything you may have. So, I know, I know. But as we get started...
We're going to let you go through your whole presentation before we're going to ask questions. Is that going to be all right?
That would be great. That way, I can get through it.
You go right ahead.
That way, I can kind of go through it a little quickly, and then after questions, then I'll also bring up Darryl as well for some questions about the Mayhood property.
Good, good.
So, here we go. On the first slide that I have, these are just basic park classifications based on the state of Florida, Division of Parks and Recreation. It is broken down into seven different classifications, the first one being a regional park. Of course, we do not have a regional park, but Lover's Key is within Benita Springs boundaries, so that is our regional park. This typically would serve a population of over 100,000 people. We don't have over 100,000 people, so this is suffice for us. Lover's Key, as you know, is over 1,600 acres, beautiful, beautiful state park, and that is also in our comp plan, that we would work with Lover's Key for them to be our regional park in the city. So there really isn't a need for us to add one at this time. Next, we have the Urban District Park. This park is a little bit smaller. It serves about 50,000 residents, but it is, it is quite large. And the minimum standards is between 100 and 250 acres. We don't have that kind of park property at this time. So, but we do have that in the area, such as the Colusa Nature Center. That is an example of the Urban District Park. Next, Community Park. We do have one of those, Benita Springs Community Park, which serves our community very well. This is where the recreation center is, our ball fields, things like that. Next, we also have neighborhood parks. We have lots of little neighborhood parks, and we'll get into each one of those as I go through this. Next is the equipped play lot and tot, or play area tot lot. These are actually located within parks, and we have several of those. We have one at Depot Park, Community Park, as well as the soccer complex on Kent Road. Next is urban open space. We also have these type of areas, which is Carpenter Lane and Windsor Preserve, as well as Oak Creek. And lastly are the beach access sites, which currently, we have two. So as we go through. Next, based on the population growth, this again, I didn't clarify this, but it is just a five-year update. That is what the plan was to do originally, because in the last five years, we have grown so much in terms of our park system that I do recommend we do this every five years, just so that we're always updated, population numbers are updated, so that we make sure we're on the right path. Based on the 2010 census, Benita Springs has a population of 43,914, and we grew annually on average 2.96 percent between 2000 and 2010. And then we're estimating an approximate increase of just .89 annually for 2011. So based on those percentages, we kind of did a range of what we would be for the next five years. So the range would be somewhere between 46,000 and 52,000. And then the next 10 years, again, it's just an estimate in a range of 48,000 to 60,000. So based on these numbers, statistical numbers we were given, we have more than adequate amount of parks currently. So I do recommend just enhancing what we have, but we do have some proposed parks that are in the works that we would like to get going as well. So. Next, this is just a map, citywide, of all of our park inventory and open space. Sorry, I couldn't get it any bigger. It is in your packets you are given, but it does list each and every park and where its location is in terms of the city. Next, Benita Springs Community Park is our largest, at 34.93 acres, and this is just an aerial overview. It also has an additional four acres with the community pool. We do have the county library kind of sitting right in the middle of this park, but this does include the recreation center, the old recreation center building, which used to be called the teen center. Now it's home to our after-school and summer camp program, as well as we offer classes in there as well. But also our skate park, disc golf course, outdoor pavilion, tennis courts, pool, and fields. We did recently add the solar panels to this facility as well, which has been a great addition to offset the cost of our electricity, and that was done through a grant from the federal government, so at no cost to the city. The recreation center itself, we do have a full-sized basketball gymnasium, men's and women's locker rooms, fitness room, lobby area. We do currently have about 1,400 members that utilize our facility, and 80% of those are over the age of 55. So we are mostly used by seniors in the community. Of those 1,400 members, my staff did go through each and every one, and we found out based on addresses that they give to us, 20% of those come from our gated communities within Benita Springs. The largest number actually is coming from Pelican Landing in Benita Bay. So 13% of those 1,400 are from outside of the city in Estero, Naples, or Fort Myers. That 1,400 does not include our after-school program, our summer camp, any of our pay classes, those are classes you have to pay extra to go to, or our special one-day events that we put on. Once you add in those numbers, it would be an additional 300 people. Once you add in those numbers, it would be an additional 300 people. So our membership at the rec center does include the community pool as well, and a variety of classes, such as our stretch and tone aerobics, line dancing, table tennis, mahjong, pickleball, and pickup basketball. So those are included in the membership. Our stretch and tone aerobics is our most popular. During season, we can have about 165 people in the class. It is held in our gymnasium to hold all of those people. Next, these are just pictures of the fitness room, in case you hadn't been to our recreation center. These are pictures of the type of equipment that we do have. And here's our gymnasium. This is actually some people playing table tennis, but this is just a, again, a picture of the facility in case you've never been. Next, this is our old recreation center building. It is connected to the recreation center through a covered walkway, and again, this facility is home primarily to our after-school and summer camp programs, but we do offer some classes in there as well, such as line dancing, yoga, tai chi, and various others. We also host luncheons. We do have a group of volunteers called the Seniors of Bonita. They are a club that do monthly meetings and luncheons at the recreation center. They also put together trips, road trips. They're actually headed to miracle baseball games, different things like that for the seniors in our area. We also have, in that small recreation center building, a computer lab, which we hold computer classes. We do have 10 individual PCs for this lab, and we hold a variety of classes. Next is our newly renovated B3 Skate Park. This, we do have about 250 members, both children and adults, so we do have a variety. This is, in addition to the rec center membership, it is $20 for an entire year to be a member of the skate park. Of course, we do require helmets. That is per our insurance, of course. And then we also have a resale shop located within the lobby of the recreation center for kids to purchase skateboards, helmets, padding, wheels, other things that they need as well. Next, we also have a disc golf course in Community Park. It is 18 holes. It does wrap around our seven-acre lake. It does provide both amateur and pro tees for you to play. It is open to the public, free, absolutely free to come, and we also have a pro shop in the lobby of the rec center for this as well. Next, we also have the Community Park Pavilion. This is also located within Community Park. It is next to our softball-baseball complex, and this is used for both basketball as well as foot-sol soccer. Next, we have the Community Park tennis courts. We do have two full-sized tennis courts. They are concrete, they're not dirt. These are for both private and group lessons. We are the only public outdoor courts in Bonita Springs at this time, so they do get utilized a lot. But we are also home to the Bonita Springs Middle School Tennis Team as well. So this is our, I didn't have an on-the-field view, but we do have four baseball-softball fields, two for baseball, one for little league, one for softball. This is home to the Bonita Springs Little League. We do have an agreement with them. They do help us out with maintaining these facilities in terms of money, as well as upgrades, and they actually own the concession stand building located within the property. We do not do the maintenance of that. We do not pay the electricity. We do not do any of the security or anything like that to that building. The concession stand building does have restrooms, meeting rooms, and a food service area, and these fields, we do rent them out to outside organizations on Sundays. It is a competitive-length pool with eight lap lanes, four for open swim, and four for just lane swimming. And we also offer, this membership again is included in the recreation center membership, and we do have water aerobic classes, arthritis foundation classes, that are also free and included in the membership as well. Next, these again are just my recommendations for improvements to the community park. One that is greatly needed is an upgrade to our locker room area. It has not been renovated or anything since the building was built in 1996, and it is getting to see some wear and tear. So that is one big one that we do need to the recreation center, as well as we've never replaced the carpeting, so that needs replaced as well. And the windows, we are having some issues with them losing their seal. And then lastly, of course, this is a big renovation. We do have 1,400 members. During season, it gets very busy, so an expansion of the fitness room would be great as well. Next to the old recreation center building, we are in bad need of replacing the floor. It is very uneven. It has not been replaced or seen any sort of improvement since 1979 when it was built, so it is in great need of repair. We also need to upgrade the restrooms in this facility as well, because they have not been, again, upgraded and have been used again since 1979, and the roof needs replaced as well. We just keep patching leaks, so we are in need of replacement. For the disc golf course, new tee pads and upgrading of the signage, just because we did go from nine holes to 18, we do need to upgrade the signage and the tee pads. And then lastly, for the baseball-softball complex, we did do some upgrades to the batting cages, but we do not have proper lighting. It just wasn't in the budget for us to do. We can hook into the existing field lights, but then you would have all the field lights on and the batting cages, when all you need are the batting cages. So we chose not to do that. That just isn't cost-effective. Next, we're gonna move on to the Bonita Nature Place. On this one as well, you'll see the Bonita Trail, which is one that we are asking on the consent agenda for us to accept a grant from the state for $160,000. So our match is $40,000 to build this, which we do have in the budget already to do. So that is one, I just brought up just a little bit in this presentation because it is on the consent agenda, so I didn't put it on its actual own slide or anything, so. But next, we do have the Nature Place, and the Bonita Trail will hook into the Nature Place. In the beginning, we just had the original roughly 10 acres in the front with the house on it, and then we acquired an additional 19 acres from the South Florida Water Management District in 2010. So now we are roughly 30 acres on this property. We do have a main building for meetings, seminars, workshops, office space. We actually just had a seminar yesterday on gopher tortoises, so we did have the community come out and join us for that, and it was free. We do have a bee house, a butterfly garden, a gopher tortoise preserve, bat house, which we do have bats again. The bats have come back. On March 30th, we are gonna have a bat viewing event. And we also have an enclosed lanai with native plants, and we do have kind of a butterfly sanctuary in there, and we do have several nature trails, one that actually goes all the way of the river at this point. Those were actually done by the FGCU students. They blazed those trails, so it's been great. Bonita Nature Place has mostly, pretty much, a lot of this is done completely by volunteers. The Friends of the Nature Place have put a lot of- It's free and open to the public. We are open during season through April 30th. I know, I don't think it's on. 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday, and Sunday on noon to 5:00. Next, we do have a list of improvements for this facility as well. We would love to add on to the trail system, connect to the Bonita Trail, so that it's all encompassed into one. Additional signage to identify trees and plants, a gopher tortoise platform, which the Friends are working on and putting in place and are going to pay for. We would also like to increase volunteers to help out and help upkeep the property, and we would like to partner with other local organizations for promotion and expansion of the facility. Next, Bonita Springs River Park. This is one of our newer parks that we just opened last year. It is 17 and a half acres, located on the Imperial River. This park features floating docks, two of them, one's for canoe kayaks, the other one you can actually use motorized boats, and it's right on the river. A lot of people though just use them for fishing, so we do have a lot of people that use it for that. There are two pergola-type structures with picnic tables, so that people can gather and have picnics in the park. We do have a shell path that encircles the pond. We also have small parking areas at this point in time. We do also have boardwalks that are built around, so that you can look at nature, as well as to get to the floating docks. And we also have a bald eagle's nest that is nestled within the park in the southwest corner, so that you can watch the eagles. And that has been a huge draw to this park. A lot of people come to the park just to view the eagle's nest. There's a picture of the, one of the floating docks on the river. Recommendations for this park are, we have applied for TDC grant. Daryl and I were just there this week on Monday to state our case, I guess you would say, for review of our grant. We are wanting to build out Phase Two, which will increase the boardwalks and shell paths of this facility, and ultimately, this is not included in Phase Two, but ultimately we would like to go under US 41 and connect to the county boat ramp on the other side of 41. We would also like to add amenities, and these were in the original plans of River Park to eventually add, were a restroom facility, playground, additional parking, of course, because once the park does get bigger, we'll need more parking, and additional pedestrians' walking and jogging paths. Next, Riverside Park, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with, because we do, it is in the heart of downtown, and it is where we hold pretty much all of our city events. This is home again to our Lyles Hotel, Artist Cottages, Butterfly Garden, and our beautiful bandshell. We also have the Veterans Brick Walkway within this bandshell area, and we will have the new addition this summer of the Veterans Memorial that is put in place. We know exactly where it's going, so it should be wonderful. Improvements to this are pretty much minimal. We could use an additional restroom facility, just to help out with all of the people that use this park during events. Yes, we do bring in portlets for that, but, you know, an additional main onsite-built restroom facility would be great. We would like to improve the security system, because we did have theft and vandalism issues in this park, so if we did have security cameras throughout the park, it would help deter that, or at least help us figure out who's doing it. And we do have our donate-a-bench program to add additional benches throughout the park. Next, we have Depot Park, which is home to our new natural playground. This park is a little more than six and a half acres, located west of Riverside Park. It is home again to our natural playground and tot lot. This worked out very well, because we do have a restroom, and the parents are going crazy for this park, because we do have a restroom facility, and it's an amazing park that we just don't have down here in Florida. We actually have hills and mounds and things like that for kids to run around on, and it's just, the parents, we've just gotten overwhelming response. We've had many birthday parties here already, so it's been very well-received. Here are some pictures of the natural playground, in case you have not gone over there. These are just a few. We have many, many pictures of this park, but pictures do not do it justice. Going to the park and seeing it yourself is the best way. Recommendations for improvements are pretty minimal as well, adding additional picnic tables, so that people can rent it out for birthday parties. That's been a huge request. Childside tables and chairs have also been a big request, because we don't have that. And eventually, we do need to upgrade those restroom facilities, because those have been there for many, many years. Next, we have Island Park. This is a small park, but across the footbridge from Depot Park. It's a little more than two acres. Currently, we only have the footbridge for connectivity and shell pathways. This is a passive park, but this was purchased through a Florida Communities Trust grant in 2003, and we do have some requirements of that grant. Those include a picnic-type structure, freestanding fitness stations, some interpretive signage, bike racks. We need to restore the shoreline and add additional mangroves, as restoration of the oak hammock, addition of native plants and trees, and lastly, the addition of a fishing pier. This is actually one we have had a few issues with, just because it will narrow the river too much. So I have been in talks with the state in removing this as one of our requirements. So we still are in talks. They haven't agreed, but they haven't denied, so we're still working on that one. Next, we have our Community Hall facility. This again is also in downtown, across from Riverside Park. This is a multipurpose, multi-purpose building that we use for many, many things. We have Parkinson's classes held here. We have a lot of meetings, seminars. We also have some of our classes in this facility. Mainly in the summertime, and we have summer camp and they take over our facility, we push a lot of our classes over to Community Hall, just because we don't have enough space. This is also the site of our Cafe of Life, which does feed the needy in a section of this park, daily for lunch, so that is every day, and is also home to the Old Banyan Tree and the Lee County Sheriff's Stub Station as well. Some recommendations for improvements, I would like to add a tot lot to this facility. I think it would be a great addition, especially during meetings and seminars and things where parents are busy inside, but I also think a small tot lot would be a great addition to this facility. We also need to work on the landscaping. It is kind of run-down. The grass isn't in very good shape at all, so we do need to work on that. We also need to replace the doors. They do stick really bad, and they are old. We did do some upgrades to the windows and the interior last year. We did put new flooring and things like that in that facility, so that's all in wonderful shape. Upgrading the restrooms in this facility would also be a big improvement, but these are at least in better shape than the rec center or the old rec center site at this time, so this would be lower on the priority list from those two. Next, we have the Lemon Tree Property. This is home to our downtown farmer's market. I would like to clarify my recommendation. Paving probably wasn't the best-used word. We do need some kind of surface, whether it be pavement, additional shell, it could be anything, but at this point, it's kind of turning into a muddy mess when it rains, so we do need to have some increased improvements to that, whatever you feel would be best. But that would be the only thing at this point. I know there are talks about doing a covered area for that. At this point, fiscally where we are, I just don't see that as a recommendation at this point, because it's just too expensive. Maybe when the economy turns around, or in the next five-year plan, that may be one of my recommendations, based on how much money we have in park impact fees and things like that. Next, we have Windsor Preserve. This is 11 acres off of Bonita Beach Road. This park has very minimal amenities, with just a few boardwalks and benches, and that really is at the recommendation of the neighborhood- And that really is at the recommendation of the neighborhood residents. They're not wanting it to be more than a passive park. I agree with them at this point because it is a great open space. And so I do not have any improvements for this one at this time. Next, we have Carpenter Lane. This again is, is a small neighborhood park on, off of Carpenter Lane. This one as well has few amenities with boardwalks and shell paths for nature viewing. It is another open space park. Eventually, we would like to added, the addition of a canoe kayak launch so that we can connect to the Blue Way Kayak Trail System. That was in the works originally for this park. So somewhere along the line, we would like to add that. Other than that, that's the only additions that we would like to see at this park. Next, we have our Benita Soccer Complex. This is next to the YMCA building on Kent Road. This has three full-size soccer fields, concession stand room with meeting rooms, as well as a tot lot playground. This is utilized by two of our youth soccer leagues, the Wildcats and the Benita Youth Soccer League, as well as the Casa Mexico Adult Soccer League. This facility is used ten months out of the year. We do close for eight weeks during the summer months for maintenance. And that's really the only time that it gets rest. That is badly needed for the, to maintain the fields and the grass. Improvements would be the addition of shade structures, which we are out to bid right now for this to be put in. Really, the complex does either need to be completely resodded or of course, in a land of where we had more money, we would put artificial turf down just because we do spend a lot of money in maintaining the grass. That yes, artificial turf would be a huge upfront cost, but the maintenance is minimal. So in the long run, it would pay for itself. We also would need the addition of higher fencing just because we are having issues with balls flying outside the fence, going into the road and parking areas and causing issues with cars. Next is our other soccer facility, the Marni Fields. This is off of Southern Pines. We have two full-size soccer fields and two youth soccer fields. This is mainly utilized by the Wildcats Soccer League, the Youth Soccer League, and Casa Mexico. This one is also open daily to the public, so the gates are unlocked. They can go right on in and play games. This one is also used ten months out of the year and we close this one for eight weeks in the fall. So we do rotate them so we don't have them both closed at the same time. Recommendations for these fields, this property is owned by FPL. We have a usage agreement with them. So the city does use them and maintain the fields. But we do have rules and limitations by FPL that we really can't add any additions to this except some bleachers and benches for spectators. No permanent structures can be installed on this property. Next, we do have our beach parks. On Little Hickory Island, these are the two beach parks that the city does take care of, maintain. Our maintenance staff does that. These are at the north end of the, of Little Hickory. These offer beach access to Benita Beach for parking. Pretty much they're just parking lots. Bay Park North does have a boat launch site on it as well. Improvements for these two are mainly just seal and repair the lots. Just because they do have some potholes and, and things like that are in need of repair. I would also like to clarify my next recommendation for the city of Benita to gain control of Benita Beach. It is in our 2000 interlocal agreement with the county that the city would take over eventually these amenities, once we were capable. I do feel we are more than capable to take over these at this time. One big reason for the city to gain control, at least of the beach accesses. I, I do feel based on many, many resident complaints that we should bring back the Benita Beach sticker, the beach parking sticker. I do think $10 is a little unreasonable for a cost, but currently I, it is $2 an hour and not even the county sticker covers Benita Beach Park. We have, since we did sell those Benita Beach Parking stickers, it's all coming back on us since those stickers have been removed. But I do think it would be a huge asset to the residents of Benita for us to take those beach parks back. I did again on Monday go to the TDC to fight for extra money for beach renourishment. We would still be able to have those funds whether the county owned them or we did. So we still would be able to get money for beach renourishment either way. So I really don't see it as a negative to our residents for us taking these over because there really isn't anything they're going to lose. I just see it as things that they would gain. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know there were some resident questions. Hopefully, I answered them. Moving on, we do have few parks with no amenities. These are just small lots that we mow at this time. They are Forest Park, Imperial Parkway Park, and Kentucky Street Park. These are all parks that we only mow. We really can't do much with them at this point due to their location, some being a right-of-way. So really, at this time, we don't have any recommendations to do any sort of improvements other than your recommendations on, on what you would like for us to do with them. Because right now, all we do is, is mow them. We do have requirements through our comprehensive plan that has been adopted for regional parks. Six acres of developed parkland for a thousand residents and seasonal population. Again, it also does state in the comprehensive plan that we would work with Lover's Key. And that would be our regional park for this area. Next, we also have in our comp plan that we should maintain a level of service of .8 acres of developed land for a thousand residents for community parks. And we do do this as well right now with our own community park. So overall, I do see that our comprehensive plan is lacking in requirements. Most cities have it much more detailed in what they ask for their parks and rec departments to have. So I would like to increase the specificity of the requirements in our comprehensive plan to make that more detailed for, for what you would like to see our parks system be. Next, we have our proposed parks. We have the Cafe of Life proposal that has come to you before council, as well as the Mayhood Property. We also have another one which is called Oak Creek Preserve. This is land that is owned by the county, but we do have an interlocal agreement with the county to maintain this as a park through the Conservation 2020 Program. In this agreement, we do have requirements of removing the exotics, trash collection, adding native plants and landscaping. My recommendations for this is that we do hold some sort of public workshop for community input as to what they would like to see. Because we do, according to the requirements, have to have a park plan in place and currently we do not. So we do have to add amenities to this. They don't specify exactly what, so we do need to come up with some kind of park plan. Next is the Cafe of Life Park, which is property that is currently owned by the county. And is requested of the city from Cafe of Life to ask the county for this piece of property for it to become a park to be named Lightner Creek Manor Neighborhood Park. This is a proposal for the Cafe of Life that they would build a facility, meeting room, storage space, food distribution area, playgrounds, restrooms, outdoor areas. And they would be responsible to build and maintain these, but it would still be a city park. We would maintain the ownership and they would just have a usage agreement to use it daily. Next is the Mayhood Property, which is located off of Matheson and East Terry. Currently, we just use it as a storage site for field dirt and equipment. We did hold a workshop in May of 2000 to get community input. The number one priority was a community garden with also a dog park. There were others that also made the list, a tree, like a, to, yeah, like a tree bed that we would use to build and maintain so that we could use those trees throughout our parks. Those were the top three. This property is home to many gopher tortoises. This week, Mike Kirby from Community Development is going to go out and find out which one of those are active and, and because those are state protected. So if they are out there, we don't want to disturb where they're located. There also, I am requesting on this property that we move forward and get your approval to start with our community garden. We do have the Rotary Club that is willing to take this on for the city. We have already staked out the exact plot. It would be 60 feet by 132 feet. If you look at the property, it would be on that right-hand side in the front half because it is a pretty large property. It is in the front. No trees will be cut down to have this, this built because we want to preserve that. There would be a total of 66 individual plots for the people in the community to rent out so that they can have their own community gardens because a lot of people here in Benita live in condos and different types of community where they can't have a, a community garden or their own garden. So it would be a place for them to be able to have this and because it was number one priority on the workshop list, we have a group willing to, to step up and volunteer and get this going, that I would like your approval on that today to proceed. So that is the one thing that I am asking of all of you today. So I'm available for questions that any of you may have about the plan.
Good. Thank you very much. Well done.
You're welcome.
And you, just, just a little over 20 minutes.
I know.
Not too bad.
I didn't have caffeine. I couldn't talk fast enough.
That's all right. Go ahead, Steve.
A great report and a call.
Thank you.
Couple of years ago, the council approved that any disabled veteran that had 10% disability or more was allowed free membership. Has that been utilized?
Yes, that has been utilized and is still in place at the recreation center. They do receive free membership to the recreation center and the community pool. Yep, absolutely.
The other thing is, when, when you say the pool is competitive, is that different than being Olympic?
It is. We're not Olympic sized. It's not big enough to be Olympic sized. But local swim teams do use our facility just for competitive lap swimming. We can't do full Olympic sized competitions. We're just not long enough.
How are their PC classes doing? Is it quite an enrollment or not?
Well, we used to. Our own Patrick Lippi used to teach those classes for us, but since he has been relocated here to City Hall, we are in the process of finding another instructor. But yes, they did go very well.
Two more questions. What type of vandalism at Riverside Park are we talking about?
We've had, the fountain is a big one. It does get soaked often. We've also had graffiti on the back end of the band shell as well as vandalism of the restrooms. And we've also during holiday in the park, a lot of the decorations have been stolen.
And I know my fellow council members know this, but I certainly don't. What is pickleball?
Pickleball is actually, it is a cross between tennis, badminton, and table tennis. The dimensions are a little bit smaller than a tennis court. They use a paddle that looks like a giant table tennis paddle and it's kind of a wiffle ball that you use. We do it indoors in our gymnasium and we have it blocked off.
There's, there's, there's no pickles involved?
No pickles. No.
That's really disappointing.
I know. You would think.
Yeah, I know you got the kids.
Just ruined my day. All right. Any other questions? Yes, Martha?
Mayor, I'd like to see us have a workshop. I'm grateful for the presentation. To have a workshop on this because I believe that's what we said. We were going to have a workshop on our park plan a while back. There's so much information that I don't think it'd be fair to just say, okay, go ahead. I've got a, you know, you don't want me to take up all the time with the three pages of notes that I wrote.
It is more of just for us to get a discussion out there for, for asking what you would like for us to do.
Sure. Well, one thing, yeah, I have so many comments that I, I don't think it'd be fair to, you know, take up all your time. And so I would like to ask, if we have a workshop, I'm certainly supportive of the community garden because I think that is what we heard. And I think it's a wonderful idea. I'd love to see some fruit trees involved. Because we have a history of that in Benita Springs of fruit trees. That's kind of how we started. And you didn't mention Kentucky Street.
I did. It was in the parks with no amenities.
I missed it. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. While I was writing all these notes. And the, the other thing is, check on the, who owns the title to the concession stand because the city does hold the title to that. We just have an agreement with those guys. And I'd love to see us at the Community Hall. Look inside the roof because there is no insulation up there. And there is just tons of air conditioning pouring into the atmosphere. Probably would be able to reduce costs due to one of those icing things, icing. I've got so many notes. I'd just like to, to move that we have a workshop on this. I know our, our newer members, Ben, we had a, when I got on council or just after getting on council, we had a park master plan that was like this thick. I think you guys, or at least Peter, needs to get a copy of that and review it. It's quite a lot of reading and.
We do have that original park master plan. It does not include a lot of the changes and additions that I mentioned in, in my presentation.
Right. Well, I have to update that too. And I agree with you about the comp plan. And I don't agree with you about Lover's Key, but that's okay. I have a degree on everything. Anyhow, I, I would move that we have a workshop on this at a later date, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Janet?
Thank you. Thanks, Nicole. Fantastic job. I agree that I think at this time that we need to enhance and work with the wonderful amenities that we have and what we're offering. So I think this is a good time to, to get that done. As we all know with our homes, you know, if you let it go, it gets worse. So we need to take some stock in what we have. What I love everything. Everything's wonderful. I'd like to just add that I think that what I've seen in a lot of, visiting a lot of other parks is the opportunity for educational and interpretive signage. You know, especially the eagle's nest. People ask questions about it all the time and, you know, that's, that's just an area. But every, almost every single park has a location where we could add something about what's there, what kind of fish are found there. If you're going to go fishing, that type of a thing. So I think that that could be something that we could also possibly look into. Great job. And you know, the Mayhood Property, it's wonderful. We've always talked about in the last few years, finding partnerships for the city to make things happen. And a partnership with the Rotary, getting this community garden started is wonderful.
Yep, absolutely.
Absolutely wonderful. Thank you.
Steve?
Just a couple of things. Thank you for the presentation and we do need a workshop. I'd like for you to think about working with Laura. We've talked about interactive signage where people could go to the map, find all the parks. If you're at Riverside Park, it's sort of like an ATM machine. And it would also talk about the eagle's nest and so on. So if we can get to the point where we could have a budget presentation to include something like that, I'd appreciate that next year. Secondly, are we in jeopardy of losing our 2003 grant with FTC because we haven't complied with all the requirements?
No, not at this time. I do have to give a steward.
It has been nine years.
Yes. I do have to give a stewardship report every year. We are doing additions each and every year. This year, the main requirement was that I have it rezoned and that did happen. So they, they've given us minimal requirements each year, but we do have to do something each year. This one, it's the very minimal things. The big one was the zoning. Next year, the big one are the picnic shelters. So that will be something I would need to put in the budget for next year because it is a requirement for next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Councilman Lockhart?
Nicole, your, your presentation was excellent.
Thank you.
I'd like to know about the participation at all our parks in terms of, do we have any statistical information on? We have 1,400 active people. Has that increased over the last few years or has it stayed the same?
Yes, in terms of the recreation center itself, yes, that has greatly increased. When I first came on board four and a half years ago, there was not a way to, to maintain those numbers. I did put in place a new membership. I did put in place a new membership software system that did allow us to track those. So I only have tracking for the last about four years. Before that, we just didn't have a system in place.
Well, as you can see for the audience, the colored things are just beautifully done. I would hope that the rest of the community would partake of the beautiful things that we have already in place.
Oh, absolutely.
And that should be a goal for the, for the community to participate, even if you want to walk down a trail that doesn't necessarily have anything special to look at. But the serenity of that is so wonderful when you want to think for yourself. So I thank you again.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well done, Bill. Thanks. Go ahead.
Absolutely nice presentation, and I look forward to the workshop where we can get into a lot of this minutia.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of questions. And I, as Councilman Longheart echoed, would like to hear numbers of usage, in-town usage, out-of-town usage.
Oh, we do have those numbers for the recreation center, but in terms of our parks, they're not staffed, so there's no way to know.
Right.
I, we do have rough estimates for our, of course, our events that are in Riverside Park, but I only have numbers of participants in our leagues, our classes, and summer camp and our membership. That's the only numbers that I would have.
Well, like I said, I look forward to the workshop. Great presentation, and would like to get your thoughts here quickly, more on the parking stickers down at the beach.
Yes. Because we did sell those, we are, we are the center that sold those Benita Beach parking stickers. We did sell, of course, they were at a minimal cost of $10. They were before that only $5 for an entire year. We did sell roughly 4,000 of those, and we've gotten complaints from probably thousands of people when those were taken away. So my thoughts is that I would like to bring that back, just because they are all coming to us saying, what do we do? We are giving them the information of the Lee County sticker, but it does not include Benita Beach Park. They have to pay the meters. So most of our residents are opting to purchase the Collier County sticker, which is Barefoot Beach. So I would say 80% of the people in Benita are now going to Collier. So that's why I would like the city to at least take over those accesses again, to be able to bring that back. Because they are willing to pay the $50 for the Collier County Beach parking sticker, I think that's something we should bring back to our residents here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see. As part of your motion, did you mean to include to allow us to have to proceed with the community gardens?
Well, of course I did.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
Yeah. I did, and I didn't formally...
That was your understanding as well?
Mayor, I didn't formally say it, but may also, since I can't, you know, speak to y'all here, the Forest Park and the Kentucky Street, and maybe, I don't know, about 2020 property, because they have a lot of restrictions about what you can do.
They do.
So the public input part, you know, the public would probably want to have a lot of things there, but we probably can't do them. Anyhow, about the, the little parks, the donate-a-bench program might be good. Butterfly gardens, plant, you know, the butterfly stuff around there, and more butterflies beautiful, but thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
I do, I do look forward to a discussion with council, because I have some differing viewpoints on some of this stuff.
Good, good. And before we take the vote, just a couple of things. The Mayho property, I mean, I have gotten some complaints about the way we haven't been taking very good care of that property.
Yes, currently it's...
We, we really need to clean that up pretty soon.
It actually, we are getting the fill dirt removed. We are going to be getting rid of that, and Daryl will speak on that. Some of it is going to go out to the nature place, because we need it for our gopher tortoise, tortoise preserve. But yes, that is the intent, especially with getting the community gardens in there. We are cleaning it up and, and would like to start working on that property.
Yeah, I, I would like to see us do that. I just don't think it's fair for us to be going after people with code enforcement.
Absolutely, yeah.
We should be citing ourselves, actually, right now. I mean, because that place is a mess.
For that property.
So that's it. So if we get, if we can get on that, it would be great.
Yes, yeah.
I know it's really convenient, but yeah, that's everybody's excuse, right?
Yeah.
The other thing, the other thing is, when we have this larger discussion, I'd like to discuss the possibility of, of putting free Wi-Fi in our, in our park, our downtown park area right there.
We actually, I believe there's discussions on that already through our IT committee.
There you have it. Okay, thank you. So, so yeah, I'd like to have that as part of that larger discussion about, you know, the pluses and minuses of doing that as well. And if, if it's okay, we'll go ahead and take this vote right now, and then we'll talk about scheduling. Everyone understand? Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and you, how do you want to take care of the scheduling? Do you want to go ahead and come up with some recommendations or some dates, and then get them around the council?
We can chat about that. I'll need to know how the council would like to do that, since I've not been involved in those kinds of workshops before, so what your preference would be helpful, so.
Okay.
Looking up a special meeting? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I think that we're looking at maybe a half-day meeting or something like that, to, to go ahead and, and have a, an opportunity for people to be able to, to discuss these, these individual items. Having some structure would be great, from Nicole, to go ahead and have it to where it's split up into bite-sized pieces, where we can talk about this park, that park, that park. And, and then, other than that, leave it to where we can go ahead and, and kind of jam a little bit on it. But anyway, so far as, so far as dates, and it's going to have to be pre-budget time, but other than that...
Yep.
I don't know.
And Ben, I think pre-budget time is part of our strategic plan, is that we look at these items so that we can also budget and, you know, have a five-year plan out. But if maybe the city manager's office can bring us an idea about how this fits into our budget and what flexibility we have, so that'd be really helpful. And, and one last thing, Mayor, because Mike Kirby's going out to Mayhood property, looking at gopher tortoises. Do you remember we used part of that as a mitigation for red hibiscus or something? Is that, is that ringing a bell with you? Anyhow, just, does that, like, it's a preserve. It's an established preserve.
There was like an acre and a half to the front west side, that they knew there was a huge concentration of them, but apparently, because there's been no usage of the property, they're kind of spreading out all over the place. So that's why Mike is going out there to check out where they are, which, which boroughs are active, which ones aren't, and try to establish where that preserve might have just moved a little bit. But that's why he's heading out to the property.
Yeah, you know how fast turtles are, you know what I mean?
Well, but if you left the ground...
Before you know it, you got turtles everywhere.
But they win the race.
Anyway, Mayor, we will do that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
And if I might follow up on something here with regards to Mayhood in particular. The last agenda, we had something up there for a presentation for Daryl, and we thought, we thought we would just kind of tie that into this presentation and let Daryl come up and talk about another item with regards to the Mayhood property. And I think we are under pressure from the state to give them an answer, or we could wait for the workshop on this. But anyway, if Daryl would come up and talk about the possibility of meeting some of our new nutrient reduction restrictions and Mayhood figures into that. And it does not, by the way, bother the community garden issue that we just voted on, so.
Sure. Daryl?
My presentation will be shorter, unfortunately, probably more technical, but we'll, please bear with me. And before I get into that, let me just say that the dirt piles, we're working to get those removed. They were actually, most of that came from when we dredged Oak Creek. We needed to, by permit, identify a site, and we were really struggling to come up with a site, but yes, we're going to get that out of there. As far as the use of the Mayhood site, DEP is requiring the city to remove 3,300 pounds of total nitrogen in the next three, five, five, three, five-year segments each. And for the first five-year segment, which we've started, we've been given such, credits for such things as education, some past projects, even the, the Phelps Avenue Water Treatment Project that we're about to start, they've already given us, I think, credit for 250 pounds of removal. That all said and done, for the first five years, we're still on the hook for about 1,300 pounds. And so the Stormwater Master Plan actually looked at 16 locations or projects to do that type of thing. Some of them small, some of them large. By coincidence, there was a single project that would take care of that at a relatively low price, and that being a, a dry detention pond and baffle box in the northeast corner of the so-called Corky Mayhood property. It makes economic sense where we think that we can work it into a park plan, if that's the council's choice. We've been pressured by DEP to give them an answer on how we intend to proceed in this next five-year, first five-year program, and, and we've emphasized that this is tentative, it can change. They don't mind if it changes, but they wanted us to be thinking about it, and we have tentatively submitted that area as a, as a water treatment area, and it'll probably be published one of these days. So we just wanted to talk about it and make sure that you're aware of where we are with that.
Okay. And this, this is an area that's, it would be a dry detention area?
Yes.
And, and my hope, Council, would be that it would be something that we would make, that we would be really proud of, that would be a natural, that would look, have all the appearances of a natural, kind of an esteroid, cypress trees, the whole thing.
It could be a multi-use facility during the dry season.
Yeah, so, anyway. So were you looking for some kind of direction, Council, to allow you guys to proceed?
Basically, at least a, that's okay type of thing, so that, you know, we're, when we're talking to DEP, we have a level of comfort that, that the councils are going along with us.
And you'll be bringing it back, the plans, for us to prove. Council, is that okay with you guys?
I have a question.
Yeah, you have a question?
Of course.
And then I'll come back on this one.
Okay, Lee County gets, I'm just wondering if you checked this possibility out, so we don't have to, I mean, if we want to do this, that's another thing, but having to do it. Have you checked with DEP whether we can get any credits for having the fertilizer ordinance for our TM...
We are getting credits.
We are? I'd like to know what the dollar amount is on that, because I know Lee, because I want to take that, I might have to go to legislature again next year on it. I know Lee County gets $13 million in TMDL credits for having a fertilizer ordinance.
I, I don't remember it in dollars. I remember it in, I mean, it was in pounds. That's why, how we get from 33 down to 1,300 for miscellaneous things like education...
Fertilizer ordinances.
Fertilizer ordinance.
Cool. I'd love to know the value. Thank you so much.
Okay. Janet, did you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to add that, you know, I think that's, it's perfect, the location. Like you said, it, it works for what we need to do with Lightner Creek flowing through the property. And just to mirror exactly what the mayor said, I'm hoping that we can make this be very environmentally attractive and, and maybe with the marsh grasses and planting the native plants, that would also make this a wildlife habitat, suitable for birding or whatever.
At this point, you know, they're not asking for a design, they're just basically...
Right, but if you can just keep that in mind, filter marshy type thing.
And we'll, and we'll do that, because we think it's going to be, could be an important amenity in the park, while serving the purpose of meeting our state requirements.
Exactly.
Absolutely. And because this is our best bang for the buck, based upon our consultants taking a look at this, we think it's an opportunity to be able to provide, use more money for those types of amenities to make it better in the park.
Carl, why don't we just go ahead and get a motion and a second to, for, for, I think, staff to proceed tentatively with this?
Be great, sir. Thank you.
Be happy to make that motion.
Motion, is there a second? And there's a second. Any other discussion? And this is for staff to, to go ahead and go through the initial process of design. Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, what else you got for us?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the next thing on the agenda, again, from the strategic plan, is a proposal to pave certain unpaved roads in the city. As you know, there are a number of streets in the city that have never been paved at all. They are gravel, and some of them are just dirt. And I think some, the city has looked at this in the past and has looked to bringing them up to city standards and then accepting them for future maintenance. That was an extremely expensive proposition, as much as $60,000 an owner. What we're doing at this point is proposing to you a much simpler plan. It's affordable for the residents on the street. It provides for, our recommendation is, an 80% participation by the city on these, because of public service, or public safety issues, and the length of times to get an ambulance down the street, whether you have potholes or versus no potholes. And so we think it's an opportunity for us to partner with the residents on these streets, and I have to commend Daryl and his staff and all the staff members that worked on this. I think it's a plan even beyond my imagination. I also want to thank the city attorney, because she's the one that gave us the initial okay, that yes, in fact, we could make this something that would work in the city. So with that, Daryl?
Okay. You know, we've talked about this on a number of occasions over the past few years, and as Carl indicated, in the past, it's sort of been all or nothing. We bring it up to city standards, and we do, you know, we talked about assessments, we talked about a lot of different things, and it always seemed to boil down to a lot of money, and how do we do it, and this sort of thing. So this time, we, we took a little bit different approach in that, you know, we seem to get by with, with the drainage as it is, and rather than get into hassles about assessments and ownership of property, in order to just promote travel over a surface, rather than having to try to find a place where the water isn't 12 inches deep in the summertime and that sort of thing, why not just go in, and almost like an emergency situation, grate it smooth, put down an inch of asphalt, and let it be maintained as a privately maintained street, but it would be an immense improvement to the neighborhoods to be able to do this. Two or three years ago, we talked about this, and we, we were in the neighborhood of 14 miles, and, and you know, and that was, that was a number that was sort of out of the book without much individual attention to any of the streets. So we, we started looking at that, and we said, well, you know, really, this, this isn't all necessary. Some of these, in fact, were in San Carlos Estates. Some of them were driveways. Some of them were paper streets, streets that existed on plaits but really weren't used. So we went through it, and we went street by street and looked at it, and we whittled it down to an amount that we're now recommending for consideration of something more like four miles. And it's a, a big change, but those, we have shown the history of where we were two years ago on Exhibit A, and with a little note of why, why we are recommending that be deleted. And then the current locations are, were shown on Exhibit B. You'll see some funny numbers on that, six, seven, whatever. We actually had ground photos to show you which, what, what those streets looked like from the ground, but in talking with Carl, we kind of realized that one paved, unpaved the ground, but in talking with Carl, we kind of realized that one paved, unpaved road looks a lot like another unpaved road and just to save bulk in the package, we didn't include those, but that's what those numbers were. So we went through there and Exhibit C is the, is the current listing of streets that we're recommending for consideration. The next Exhibit D, again, carries that one step further because it adds to it the number of abutting, well, it adds two things. It adds the number of residents that would appear to be using that and also the number of abutting streets if we were going to assign costs based on how many lots actually abut that street. And as a result, we went through, taking an estimated construction cost, dividing it by the cost per abutting lot, which gave us sort of a priority list, at least as, for consideration for the streets. And the cost per fronting lot on that list of streets ranged for anywhere from a little over a thousand to almost four thousand dollars. So that, in our way of thinking, that maybe we ought to, to provide the most benefit to the number of residents, stick more with the lower-cost lots initially and that's sort of how we developed our program. If you had looked at the last exhibit called Exhibit, or B, it has a red dot on areas that just show the number of houses on a particular street and so that gives you some idea of the density and the number of people that we're able to serve. So having gone through all of that exercise, we came up with, using just an assumed contribution of eighty percent by the city and twenty percent by the residents, we came up with a per-unit cost and assuming that we might do this over a four-year program, the first year being about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, I think, with the city paying approximately eighty percent of that, again, subject to council discussion, but that we felt that would be a starting point and which would be about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and about thirty thousand dollars by residents. There are some issues yet that, from a staff standpoint, we were, we were struggling with, which, you know, which finalizes the number of streets in the timetable, the percentage to be funded by the city versus residents, you know, and do we, do we do it on a cost estimate and then assign everybody a percent of that cost or do we bid it out and then do it? Just a few details, you know, then there are issues like if twenty percent of the people on a street don't want to do it, the rest of you, how do we cover that cost? So those are some sort of loose ends that we need to tie up. But that's what we got today.
Yeah, I got a lot of questions. Does anybody want to start this, start this out? Oh, okay, I will. Oh.
Before, before Council starts talking about it, I just want to go through the legalities of it.
Oh, okay.
First of all, if you do decide to set up this program, we do need documents as to how to set it up, the owner, the pay-in amount, and of course, you guys will decide that. But also, there will be very critical to this because the roads will continue to be in private. We need a document evidencing the consent for the city to go in and do the paving on that particular road because it is a private road, we don't want to trespass. But also, those documents will be recorded so future property owners recognize that that road and what's been done, it is a, still a private road. So that is a critical component of participation with any of the streets, you know, with the property owners. Of course, residents may have different, because sometimes the residents are not the same as the property owners. That is very important to make sure we get that from, the buy-in from the community before you can go through and actually do the paving out there. So if you have one neighbor who pretty much says no, you're not going to be going over that particular road or you're going to be bypassing that particular person.
Right. In other words, in order to pave a private road for us to do that, you have to get a hundred percent participation to sign off?
Absolutely. And I mean, it is similar to, the analogy that we used with storefront grants. This is very similar to other projects that we've had with different businesses where we provide historic preservation, so another example, where you do provide money for people to make improvements on their own property. We will assist with making the improvement, but it's still retaining its private property subject to that document so that people know that it's still private property.
Future maintenance costs are, does the city, does not absorb that? We pave at the one time, that's yours to keep?
Right.
Correct.
The peoples.
Yes.
To keep. All right, good. All right, questions?
That's a very good, I'm glad you brought that because that's a good segue, Mayor, is I'd like to see us in this program maybe set up MSTUs for those who, I mean, it's taken us twelve years to get here because I know a lot of people voted for cityhood, me included, heard, "We're going to get roads paved, yay." And just full disclosure, I live on one of these unpaved roads, I hope I-
You have a voting conflict.
I have a voting conflict, so I can discuss it, but I can't vote?
Correct. Now, for the whole program, you do not have a voting conflict, they started counting lots, you own two lots, correct?
I own five lots.
You own five lots, okay. I don't know the math, you cannot own more than one percent of the total area, but for the particular projects for 2012, you would have a voting conflict.
Okay, well, I know, isn't it if it's like a hundred people?
One percent rule.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's what I was going to ask you if I have a conflict that way, but I'll just say that you probably get a hundred percent out of my street. So, back to the maintenance thing. I can discuss it though.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, because this is a big, this has been going on for, they're like thirty-five years on our street. Somebody collected three hundred dollars back in like nineteen eighty-two, I think, and took off with it.
You had a question about the maintenance?
The question for the maintenance, okay. It's just, it's a long struggle for people. Once we get there and get roads paved, you know, the city attorney discussed, well, then it's yours, but I'd like to see us set up some kind of MSTU because let's preserve what's been done and I don't want to be back at this place twelve years from now, being a little old lady at the council with my gray hair saying, "Can't you help me set up an MSTU?" You know, it's, it would be wise for us to try to do that if we could do that, so. And then the other question is, these are the last of the roads to be paved in town because a lot of people can't afford it on these roads, okay? Either privately, just going out and getting a paver. Is there a way to set up a payment plan for people on these roads?
Well, I think that is one of the things we will have to look at more closely. Right now, the projected contribution is two hundred and sixty-three dollars per landowner on an adjacent street. And that's because, to credit to staff, that's because they've bundled this into one project, even though it's multiple streets, and have used all those adjoining property owners' numbers to keep that number low. So if, I would have, I would want to work that out, that's another one of those things we would want to work out if we have to go there, but I think we would like to approach the residents first and say, you know, for two hundred and sixty-three dollars or whatever that final number ends up being, are you prepared to participate? And if it's a burden for somebody, then yes, we might have to come up with a different mechanism.
I think you're going to have to do that on some of those roads because, you know, I just, I just know some of those people and that's going to be a burden.
Right. And I hear the councilwoman's concerns about ongoing maintenance, I think it's an excellent idea. That is something that we can address, I think, separately from getting the roads done in the first place because then we buy ourselves some time to decide what to do about the maintenance. So I don't, I'm hoping we're not looking at perhaps tying that together. I think we can get the roads paved and immediately start working on, okay, it's kind of like pre-funding, re-nourishment, okay? Are we going to start trying to pre-fund for what we know will be eventual maintenance needs on these private roads? And so, just, just a thought.
Yeah, and there's a larger philosophical question, I think, that Rick hit upon there, which is the fairness issue. If you're going to set up, you know, funding mechanisms to maintain people's private roads, are you going to do it for everybody?
Well, and that's a question we need to answer.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
No, wait a minute.
Hold on, you don't, you don't repair everyone's private roads.
No, no, Mayor.
So, so, but that-
No, Mayor, we, the people who have public roads have a funding mechanism, it's called the general fund. So-
Right.
The ad valorem, we collect taxes. If you set up an MSTU, you would be collecting money from them to create, and I would say, not just these private roads that are four miles, but all the private roads because when, wait, you collect, wait, wait a minute, if you collect some kind of maintenance fee for all the private roads in town, you know, along West Terry, there are private roads that we, that are already paved, we don't realize, but they're going to be having a problem in the next ten to fifteen years, breaking down along Pennsylvania. A lot of private roads in town that are currently paved, look pretty good, but they're going to have a problem in the future and it's going to be expensive for them. If you collect MSTU on all the private roads, then you can do a cyclical repaving program like we do for the public roads.
Yeah, and that, and that is a large animal you're talking about.
Sure.
There's something, up citywide MSTU to take care of all these other roads is pretty, it's a big undertaking.
It's a big undertaking, but it has to be, somebody's got to do it, otherwise we're piecemealing it and having drainage issues and, you know, it, it's a, it's a big issue.
Yeah, okay, and Steve?
Well, Mayor, one of, my first question was obviously the maintenance, so that's already answered. The other question I have, maybe I missed this somewhere along the way, have you assessed the, excuse me, maybe that's a bad word, have you discussed this with the neighborhoods at the respective unpaved roads as to whether they would buy into this or not?
Not to any. You know, an individual perhaps here and there, but we haven't had formal meetings.
Okay, so.
Well, and I believe Councilmember McIntosh might have an answer on that, at least partially. We have one road there and, so.
Because there will be definitely people that will, and if we have to get one hundred percent buy-in, what happens there? What if you got, let's say there's a hundred, just for example, a hundred houses and one house does not want it, that means we can't do it, correct?
You would have to probably, you know, acquire the interest from that one parcel and if you needed to do that, the cost of the program makes it-
I mean, you even see in some communities where the pavement goes boop and goes around that, goes around there, where that, it happens. It happens sometimes.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Janet, and I'll come to you, Steve.
Being that this is phase one, in fairness to the residents of the next phases, the recommended eighty-twenty, it's working right now, but obviously, we need to come up with a number there that's going to continue to work for us, given, you know, we don't know with our crystal balls what we'll have in our general fund going down the line. So I'm just concerned that whatever we do now, you can't say to the next group, next year, "Well, sorry, you guys are going to have to pay fifty percent" because that wouldn't be fair to those who did eighty-twenty.
Yeah, good, Joe.
Yeah, and that, that brings up a good point, is that we're picking the low-hanging fruit here and, you know, as we move on to areas with less density, the cost-
Will change.
Will change.
Right. And then exactly to what we've kind of started to talk about, I had a property owner this morning ask me, and I hadn't even thought on those terms, was, I live on an existing private road and they said, "It's going to need resurfacing at some point, is there going to be a city resident partnership to handle that with the same type of cost structure?" So I think that we've got a few questions that need to be tackled moving forward with this.
Right, and I would, I would just say that obviously, this proposal is for those people who have not even had the benefit of paving in front of their homes, ever, as opposed to those who have asphalt in front of their homes, they're on private streets, privately maintained streets, and they're in bad shape. You're right, I think there's going to have to be some kind of line drawn, I'm not sure where, public policy-wise, the council's going to want to land on that.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Steve?
There's two or three things. I really appreciate what you've done here. This, this raises our quality of life and level of class tremendously, so thank you, we've worked too long. And Carl, thank you for taking that initiative and finding out how we could possibly do this. I do have several questions. First of all, to Councilwoman Simons' issue of MSTUs, there are both gated and ungated communities with private roads that are currently paved, that are already paying that private tax, so to tax the entire city of private roads, just let me finish. To double tax is not appropriate and unacceptable to people in those communities, I'm sure. Secondly, Daryl, I'm not sure I understood the exhibits, is Exhibit D, you talked about a four-year plan, do we have a list of priorities where you're starting? I, I can't seem to figure this out.
If you go to Exhibit D-
Yes.
And starting at the top, at McKenna, Saunders, and Pauley, and let me mention that those did not, were not included in this list because the city has actually taken over maintenance of those streets. They are sealed with what we call a seal coat, they're in pretty decent shape now. In the next few years, they're going to need additional work, but that would not be, that would be part of a regular resurfacing program. But it was included because these have been discussed much in the past.
Okay.
But it, as you work down the list, I went down actually to where I got to, these are Carpenter Lane, Taylor Street, and Oakland Drive. At that point, I had put in a footnote saying that this area seems to be in transition and we'd recommend holding off on that right now. And then as I jumped down to the next step, I'm at New York and the price is all the way up to two thousand, so we seem to be entering sort of another realm there. And as I looked at it, what I had covered then is about twenty-five percent of the total, and if we say that we're going to do twenty-five percent a year for four years, it kind of made sense to me, at least.
I understand the logic, but I wasn't clear what the procedure was in terms of, but let me, let me just say this. Shangri-La is going to be a major east-west thoroughfare that cuts a lot of the traffic off, currently off of Old Benita Road. It'll get a lot of people, both out of Benita Golf Country Club, San Carlos Estates, up to seventy-five and without going through Old Benita. Once we pave that to city standards, we're going to have two roads that come right into Shangri-La, Tropic Acres, and Jarrah Road, that are going to be dragging rock, sand, dirt, all the way through. I would, I would ask that you move those two streets up quickly in order to protect what we're trying to do on Shangri-La Road. And those, we have already talked to those residents, Carl and I have been out there, they're in agreement, that's the kind of thing they'd like to do, like to have part of. So if we could move that up, once we decide on really the final, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things there. Regardless of whether there's an MSTU or not, everybody in Benita is paying for this. So I don't, I don't want, you know, to make anybody think that this money just comes from, yeah, it's the people who already paid for their roads, the people who paid for having the paving done, the people who live in the gated communities, everybody, everybody will be, if you do it this way, which you may well do, it's a great, it's a good idea, they will be paying for part of this. And the reason is, is because they do create significant health, welfare problems. So that's our justification for the private roads. The one thing that I'm a little iffy on here, besides that a bit about the fairness issue, other people having, have went through the problems of want to head and down it themselves, which is a great thing, is how do you, if we're going to go out and get a development order to do these things, from ourselves, to do these things, how do you get a development order to do thing, something that's not up to standards, that does no water quality and get all those permits and do that?
I don't know if-
Because if I came in, because if I came in there to build a road-
I understand.
Yeah.
Good morning.
You're just going to make it happen, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's the kind of answer we like up here.
Actually, what we'll do is-
Actually, no.
What we'll do is, is we'll look, look at deviating from Chapter Three, which defines those standards that you would have for water quality and-
You don't need to deviate from Chapter Three.
Well, I haven't seen any plans, I don't know exactly what we're looking at in terms of.
I'm glad there's consensus here, but go ahead.
We discussed this issue previously and I'm sorry, Carl, I don't know if you were involved because this was done with prior to your coming here. We, we talked about Chapter Three of the Land Development Code, which has the development standards and there is a limited development order if you are just going within the corners of the particular road, you're staying on the road, you're not widening it, you're not increasing it, you're not doing any stormwater quality, something like that can get an LDO as opposed to a full-blown development order because you're just basically layering an additional amount of asphalt on it as opposed to going in and, similar to when you're striping or, you know, striping or reconfiguring a parking lot, that's, that's similar to this, you're not going in and redoing the stormwater. So that is one that falls within an exemption within the LDO, that is permissible as an LDO. And Stuart and John and Daryl and I and Gary Price sat on that about six months ago.
Yes, that's true. I don't know exactly what Daryl has plans. If we need to do anything, we'll do it. We'll follow the rules, but Audrey's exactly right in terms of what she's talking about for an LDO.
Yeah, and I apologize, Council. And what about so far as the Water Management District? What's their view of us, the city, the municipality, going in and paving roads and not doing water quality? What's that going to be like?
They've been working with us in the past and I think the LDO will pass muster with them. Obviously, you know, we, we need to get that reassurance again, but it was positively received a year ago when we discussed it with them.
Okay, and, and the other, the last thing I have is, of course, no good deed goes unpunished.
Probably so.
Yeah, and, you know, from, from a standpoint of when, when the utility used to go through there and pave roads that weren't paved before, you know, we, I want Council to know, you do this, well then-
Never had any problem before.
Yeah, yeah, we never had any problems here before, we've never flooded before, my driveway's got water standing in it, I need you to fix this. That, that's what, that's what you're going to buy, along with paved roads. So it's, it's important just to know that going into this, okay? Any other questions, yes?
Well, just a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, and then I'll go down to Bill.
Yeah, it's also, you know, we're talking about the environment and software water management. I know on several of the roads, which were limed, they drain right into the Imperial River, you know, through the drainage system that they sit on, and I think that causes some kind of, you know, silting and environmental problem. And problem in our city piping system as well, too, because that has to be cleaned out, you know of which I speak. And I think that, you know, if we're going to be a twenty-first century city, we should probably have urban roads paved. I mean, you know, it just seems to be something- that will upgrade the quality and standard of our community. I, okay, I live on a dirt road, but I got to tell you, so, you know, we've discussed this a lot on our road for years, some people kind of like the rural feel, one block away from City Hall, they're like, "We're going to lose that," and while people, you know, the UPS trucks blowing up and down the road, but on the other hand, they're tired of the UPS trucks blowing up and down the road and having, not being able to open your windows, you know? So, when I spoke about the MSTU, Councilman McIntosh, I certainly wouldn't want to double tax people, this would just be to provide a mechanism for improvement for those who don't have a mechanism for improvement, so that they do pay their share.
Yeah, and that option will still be out there for people, regardless of what you decide or don't decide today, the option to have a full-blown, up-to-grade road that everybody participates in with an MSTU is still going to be there, right?
Correct.
That's correct. Bill?
Thank you, Ben. And I would like to compliment the staff on the presentation, I've been involved with this for some time in District Six, and I have heard numerous times, when are they going to pave the roads? And of course, I've tried to explain to them the private road situation and so forth. The economic benefit to the homeowners that would have a paved road will enhance their value of what they have dramatically over time, and having a safety issue with the fire department and the sheriff's office having to go on a call on a road similar to Martha's is very dangerous, the safety issues of, I mean, I've been on streets that the holes are this deep, and it's just totally, Benita is the best place in southwest Florida, and when, by doing something like this, it will make it even better for all of us, the tax base will rise.
Yes.
Everything will work out, but we need to have a step forward, and you're starting that with this, and I'm a hundred percent behind it, and thank you for bringing it to us.
Okay, Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, a lot of my questions have been answered already, but I'm just getting maybe into the minutia here a little bit, these numbers, you know, your projected costs-
Yeah.
Can you walk me through what those are based on, please?
The, well, one in particular, we looked at generally at what asphalt is going for. A year ago, we did a similar project out, sorry, east of I-75, in cooperation with the Water Management District, but anyway, you know, we, on that particular project, we were able to get it for something like a dollar square foot, here, I bumped it up to a dollar and a half, just because it's more small projects moving around, and some of these, you know, the grading's a little bit different, so, I mean, we're, we're at a ballpark price, I think, so, you know-
Ballpark on the high end.
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the staff recommendation, when you say proceed with the project in calendar 2012, obviously, you have more work to do here in order to create a program.
There are steps, this is the initial step, correct.
So, is your proposal just for us to give you tentative approval to proceed with developing a project and program, along with the accompanying documents that property owners will have to sign, releases, that type of stuff, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, we wanted to lay the initial program out to council, see how you responded to that, if it's favorable today, yes, we know we have the second stage of work to do to fully develop the program, get everything in place, we'd like to bring it back to you at that point, make sure everyone's comfortable with that, and then, and then move forward. And of course, we would be looking for, you know, if we could get this thing moving within this fiscal year, we'd probably be looking for approval on a budget amendment as well, to include the money to get started on these things, but with an, with a tentative approval today, staff will move forward to try to answer all the questions and get all the i's dotted and the t's crossed.
I would suggest, and you probably already thought through this, but I think that we need to probably have accompanying this, a resolution of need, something that, that lays out why, in fact, this is important to do, because you are committing people's tax dollars to do this, that, that we can, we need to make the argument that they are receiving an indirect benefit from that, and I, I think that that's going to be an important part of this, but go ahead, John.
Just two quick points, the resolution of need has been discussed, we would probably hold off on that until we were actually ready to pull the trigger on a project. The second thing is that, as Darrell mentioned, there are some issues that are very hard, frankly, to get our, our hands around, for example, the issue of what do you do in terms of a situation where ninety percent of the homeowners along a particular stretch are in favor of this and ten percent aren't? By allowing us to take these initial steps, put the documentation together, do some outreach to people, we may find that some of those problems go away, we don't have to start curing a problem that doesn't exist. On the other hand, we may find just the opposite, that reaction is, is so splintered that we don't have a project to go forward with, so again, allowing us to take these initial steps could make the process easier as we get further into it, and that's what we're hoping, frankly.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I have two questions real quick, on here, we're not going to be accepting any right-of-way, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so therefore, I saw something about twenty-foot wide roads, that's just an estimate, because there's some roads where I've talked to the neighbors, like, "Well, we don't want to cut down our trees," you know, so we'll work around that kind of thing, and we're not cutting our trees, and-
Right, right, we would expect, we would expect to work only within that area where it appears that you have a road.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you so much. I won't be voting on this, so I hope I have your support, peeps.
Okay, go ahead, Stephen, I'll come back to you, Pete.
Oh, I was going to make a motion, we accept, give staff the, go ahead.
There's a motion and a second for staff to go ahead and proceed with developing this program, Bill, did you have something to add to it? No, and Pete?
I just quickly, how are you going to speak and communicate with the residents? Will it be by mail, will it be by telephone, will it be by, I'm just trying to figure out the process there.
Well-
Face-to-face, how do we do this?
Right, I mean, I will tell you that it probably works best if you find a leader or two on each street, and have them get their neighbors together for a little coffee clutch, and we come and lay this out, and get a good feel from the neighbors, how they all feel, and we, we won't be able to communicate with all people that way, because some people just won't show up to that, but that cuts down the work a lot.
Right, because I would like to propose, obviously, some of these roads are in my district, that we have mini-town hall meetings, if you will, and-
Yeah, I mean, we can do it whatever way the councilmembers feel are going to be most effective, I think when it comes right down to it, if we haven't communicated with everybody verbally, obviously, letters or some other more formal type of communication is going to have to take place.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good, Steve?
I would support that approach, Carl, you remember when we did this on Quail, so it worked very, very well, and I also would like to put my support behind Shangri-La, because that is a one-bad road.
All right, good deal. All right, Council, a roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Hi.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Hi.
Councilwoman Simons?
Jane.
Councilman Longheart?
Hi.
Councilman McIntosh?
Hi.
Councilwoman Flack?
Hi.
Okay, and you're going to bring something back for us to take a look at, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Darrell.
Okay, we are, is there nothing else underneath the presentations, you have nothing else there?
Big time.
We're going to take a short break, ten-minute break, everyone, please be back at the podium here at ten after, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, you don't know, and we go through every time we see them.